Begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on the agenda are the Board of Education norms, which are available on board docs. And next we have approval of the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda for the May 16th, 2023 regular open session meeting.
Jim's second. Have a motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have the MSBA monthly report for May.
Welcome to the May edition of the Missouri School Boards Association's Board Report. We begin with a look at the issue of swatting and the calls that targeted numerous Missouri schools recently. Swatting calls are hoax phone calls that report serious crimes, attempting to fool emergency services into sending a SWAT team to respond to a supposed emergency. In late March, there were at least nine such threats made to schools across Missouri in one day. John McDonald is the COO of the Council for School Safety Leadership and is recognized internationally as the architect of the Columbine High School Post-Tragedy Security and Emergency Management Plan. He says that dealing with swatting calls is complicated for many reasons.
Without a good emergency operation plan, schools really struggle in, you know, in the knowledge of what do we do now? How do we manage this moment in time? And, you know, how do we effectively keep everybody safe and not shut schools down? And it's a challenge. It's one more threat that we're dealing with now. And as the AI, artificial intelligence issue continues to grow, we're going to see more of these type of threats. And we have to be prepared for that. We have to have the really honest, direct conversations about how we're going to manage that. And if you do that early and you tabletop these things, talk about it, walk through your process together, make sure everybody knows what their role and responsibility is, you'll have the opportunity to manage these without necessarily closing your schools. Now, there's times when you'll have a threat that reaches such significance that you have to take action to immediately protect everybody and everything. And that's part of the learning that we'll do together over the course of the next year through CES, MSBA, and our partner districts all over the state of Missouri.
Regarding the importance of an emergency operations plan, don't forget that the deadline is approaching to sign up for your district's free emergency operations plan development tool. MSBA, in partnership with the Department of Public Safety, is offering a subscription to the MOEOP development tool at no cost for two years, but you must be signed up by June 1st of this year. There is no time element for completing emergency operations plans. The only time element is for participation, so please sign up now to take advantage of this crucial school safety resource. Visit the MSBA website for more information. MSBA's Summer Summit is set for June 16th and 17th in Branson. Join school board members and leaders from across Missouri to learn about emerging trends and hot topics in education. It's a great opportunity to participate in valuable sessions and to connect with your colleagues from school districts across the state. Summer Summit attendees will have the opportunity to hear a dynamic keynote speaker at the summit. Dr. Jacqueline Sanderland, better known as Dr. Jackie, will be the featured speaker at the Summer Summit's general session breakfast at 8:00 AM on Saturday, June 17th. Dr. Jackie is an accomplished school principal who has become famous for her straightforward "why not" attitude, which has led to dramatic improvements in some of Southern California's most under-resourced schools. Her passion for guiding young people has garnered national recognition.
Jackie, we were so impressed with your scholars and the work that you've done to turn the school around that the National Lacrosse League wanted to give you this check for $50,000.
Dr. Jackie's presentation will focus on the five Cs: community, collaboration, capacity, connections, and creativity. Visit the MSBA website for more information about the Summer Summit. Also, be sure your board is represented at the June Delegate Assembly to be held in conjunction with the Summer Summit. Delegates will be electing state officers for the coming year at that meeting. The nominating committee is proposing a slate of officers for consideration, including the offices of President-elect and Vice President. You can watch video interviews with the candidates for state office posted on the MSBA website. And finally, keep an eye on MSBA's social media pages for good news stories about the amazing programs, students, and staff in public schools across Missouri. These stories are tagged with "It's Our Why." May begins with a different Belcher Scholarship winner featured each day. Keep an eye out for your region's winner. These students are great reminders of why we do what we do. And with that, thanks for allowing us to have some time at your board meeting, and we'll see you in June for the next MSBA Board Report.
Next on the agenda is the approval of the Consent Agenda.
I'll move to make a motion to approve the Consent Agenda items as presented.
Second.
Have a motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have public participation. Board members and administrators will listen to concerns and will respond when appropriate by mail or telephone at a later date. In order to speak during public participation, a public comment form must be filled out and submitted to the Board President prior to the beginning of the meeting. Per policy BDDH-1, public participation at board meetings, the following rules will apply to the public comment portion. The public comment period will not exceed 15 minutes. No individual will be permitted to speak more than once during this period. Each speaker will be allotted no more than five minutes. Discussion will be limited to items from the posted agenda. All speakers must provide their name and address prior to speaking, and if there is insufficient time for everyone to speak, the board will encourage participants to submit their questions in writing or utilize the process for putting an item on the agenda. I do not have any public comments.
I do not either.
Next, we have the Report Superintendent.
Thank you. The first item I wanted to point out is the last day of school is on Wednesday, May 24th, and it's an early out, so it's 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM. Unless you are fortunate enough to be a senior and your last day is tomorrow, correct, Dr. Boyd?
Well, they have to do the barbecue and graduation practice, but...
Last physical day in the building.
Last physical day in the building is tomorrow, so we wish our seniors well. Next, notes of appreciation. I wanted to point out in notes of appreciation, I put a letter in there from the Success Ready Students Network. They wanted to acknowledge and thank our Communications Director Bailey Otto for all of her hard work helping them get the communication plans developed for the work that we're doing with this group. So, wanted to acknowledge that and say thanks to Bailey for helping out with that project.
Oh, Bailey.
And then you do have two thank you cards for the DESI Teacher Recruitment Grant Scholarships in there, so I just wanted to point those out if you haven't seen them. We got them this afternoon and added them. Graduation is Saturday, May 20th, in the Peggy J. Johnson Gymnasium. If the gym is full, feel free to go over to the Performing Arts Center, or if you prefer a seat with a comfortable cushion, go to the Performing Arts Center. Doors will open at 7:00 PM and the ceremony begins at 8:00. So, we are excited about this year's class. I think we have a lot of staff members?
Seventy-eight.
Seventy-eight coming to graduation, so...
That's awesome.
So, we're excited to see how it all goes and just excited.
We're down there working on the layout today, trying to figure out how we're going to get them all seated and everything else, but we're super excited. Moving things forward a little bit, if we can get you guys there between 6:30 and 6:45 and just right outside, they can session stand like usual.
Thank you.
And we'll have our parking spot?
Yep, our parking spot, and we'll have your...
Sorry, guys, that's important.
Got that all ready to go for you guys?
It becomes vitally important that night.
It does.
We will have your parking spots ready to go.
Okay.
Okay, and then we are all ready to the Principal Reports. I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Heberly.
Good evening.
Good evening.
All right, I decided to add our wonderful secretaries to our Positive Office referrals because we all know we cannot do it without our secretaries. They truly make our building run smoothly. Bria and Darla are amazing, and I didn't want to go without saying that this evening. Positive Office referrals, Kayden Alernt, and then to the bottom, Kendall Wagner, Christopher Seeball, Brayden Arnold, Sebastian, or Damian Bone, and Madeline Johnson. We had two celebrations this past month. Our kindergarten celebration, I don't know if you were lucky enough to come see it, but it was priceless. It's my favorite performance of the year for sure. They have been doing square B and C at the celebrations for 27 years. I did not realize that and they announced that that night. So, they have the farm theme and sang some adorable music. And then last night was our preschool graduation. This was the classic photo, the normal photo you would see a preschool class do, and then they made them stand normal. It was great, too. Mrs. Seer did a wonderful job with the music, and the kids enjoyed it. Parents enjoyed having them walk down with their gowns and hats. It was nice. And we have had so many field trips. We still have a few more to come, but fourth grade, they did bowling and incredible pizza. Then we had first grade, they were able to attend the mini fair in St. Genevieve. These are just some of the kiddos, obviously. And then we had fifth graders that went to the symphony with Mr. Freidmeyer, and they even got to play some instruments. It was nice. First grade went to Missouri Botanical Gardens. Fifth grade went to the Cardinal game, and I believe they were all winners. And then we had our fifth grade mixer, and these were just a few shots of them with their new friends at the middle school, which is always a fun time for all of them. Field day. Our field day is, we do K through, pre-K through two separate from three through five. So, the three through five had the big kid games, and then pre-K through two had some little calmer games. And then Kona Ice came, and they donated, well, PTO paid for it, Kona Ice to all the students, so that was a special treat for them. Some other things that have been going on, I had Steph Gek and Jessie Bloom come into the building to train our pre-K, sped kindergarten, and first grade teachers. We did a behavior training. They had presented at one of our PD days, but our kindergarten and first grade teachers were in letters training, and I felt now is, I mean, we definitely need some training in this area. So, they went through some of that, and we're going to seek some more of that out next year, some PD for the teachers in that area. We have our annual art show going on in the building. Miss Philford does a wonderful job displaying student artwork, and it is voted on, and they receive awards for their prizes and things like that. It is open for voting through tomorrow. Then we had a former student, Harley Henderson. Ms. Bell and Mrs. Bowen both taught her. She is the author of Dark Truth Differences. She came in and read and spoke to third and fourth grade, well, just Mrs. Bowen and Mrs. Bell's class about being an author, and her writing experience is based on children with differences in inclusion. Her own daughter has special needs, so she felt the need to share her love and passion for that, and she is working on a second book. The kids really enjoyed that. We had our family fun night. All the teachers helped put on the event. We had 200 participants. We had it scheduled for outside, but we ended up being in the night. Still, we improvised and did some inside activities, and it was a good time for our families. Betty's Color Run, this was a big success again this year, and such an honor to have that family come and participate. They were all very pleased with the event. We had some middle school students and high school students, too. We volunteered that day, which was nice, and it was just a fun time having everyone. And it's, I forgot to ask Miss Roland what was raised for this scholarship this year, but she said, "Please pass again this year what we had last year." So, it's a great event. And Teacher and Staff of the Month, Mrs. Nelson, always goes above and beyond with everything she does for her students. Her love and care for all her kindergartners is so big. Mrs. Nelson is such a great teacher at BLE, and I will second that. That was good. Bailey is such a blessing to our students. She works so well with our young students, always keeping things fun and positive. Bailey is also great at maintaining composure during tough times and is helpful and being a support to our students in times of need. Sorry, I have a... We are so lucky to have her here, and that is true, too. She's wonderful with our specialized students and actually all the kids in the building. They all know Bailey, so that's my report.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So, I did my very best to put everything that's happened since the last board meeting on these slides. Been watching Mrs. Heberly's slides, I realized I forgot a couple of things, so I will try to talk about those. On this first slide, we have some students there on the left with Lois Swig, Ms. BFW. We have Leila Schmidt, Letty Adams, and Grace Lipp. They were all winners, and they received monetary gifts from them. In the top middle, Mrs. Bowman gave away some third grade music awards. I'm not even going to try and name them all right now, and I did write my list, but each of those students received a music award for their participation in music class. At the bottom, we have our graduating early childhood and preschool classes. Pictured right there is just Mrs. Kreitler's preschool class, but we also had some early childhood students that graduated that night, and if you've ever seen our performance as well, they do some songs and they sing, and then the teachers put together this video that even if you don't have kids participating, you're going to cry. So, you better bring some tissues. It was a great event. And then Nate and I met with the April Students of the Month. We have the K-2 kiddos at the top and the 3-5 kids at the bottom, and we're going to try to squeeze in the May one next week. In the midst of all of the other activities, we're going to squeeze out the NOS and AIG as well. This is just the variety of things that are happening in our building. For third quarter, we did some Dragon Track Awards for the classes that are into their Dragon Track model, and they got to spin the wheel. And pictured there on the left are just the top and bottom. We did picnic and popsicles with some of the classes, and Nate and I took them out to the leaded garden, and we had popsicles with the students. And Linda there at the top, it happened to be Cat Day, too, and she really wanted a picture of that hat, so we took that. That was fun for the students. The two middle pictures are the mini fair. Hannah Fritti-Dancy puts on the mini fair for our students for first and second grade, and they went up to the fairgrounds and participated in those activities. The top two pictures on the right, we did a testing celebration to sort of signify our K-2 students were finished with the NWDA, and our 3-5 students were getting ready to do the math test. So, very graciously, Bloomsdale allowed us to bring their bounce house in, and we set up the gym, and we had bounce house, and we had fun, and then we bought Kona Ice for all the students. Mary brought the truck out. And at the bottom, as Mrs. Heberly said, we have a picture of the mixer where Bloomsdale Elementary and St. Gene Elementary fifth graders mix. Okay, this is a hodgepodge too. So, at the top, we had our second semester Power Leader Ceremony, and so we honored our third and fourth quarter students that received the Power Leader Award. We did not take the trolley during the fourth quarter just because schedules, it was really hard to coordinate and get enough people, but I did see Mary giving a break tonight today, and she said, "Oh, my goddess, you fooled me." She's like, "I had no idea." I had to tell her, like, "Why you lying to get her there?" I told her she was presenting an award. So, they were prepared, they had a speech. I don't know. Okay. And they were surprised. In the top middle, we have five of our power council leaders. It was our former, like, White House, St. White House team, and Jess Grimminger and Audra took the district van, and they took the kids around to various businesses in the community that supported our career day, that helped with donations for different things that they were doing, and these businesses had no idea they were coming. So, they were very thankful, and the kids loved it, and most of the CEOs or business leaders made it a point to be in the pictures. They wanted to come be in those pictures. And just like Mrs. Heberly did, we had Administrative Assistance Day, so I wanted to put Joyce and Steph in there. We always stoke that those are really the two ladies that run the building. They are in charge. And then we have Nurse Becky down at the bottom, and then we have our kitchen crew to the right. And then the middle two pictures are our Teacher Appreciation. Joyce and Steph always sign up to be the lounge hostesses on Teacher Appreciation Week. So, they had, that's the door going into our workroom. They decorated it with our superhero theme, and they had decorations in there. And then thank you to NEA, MSTA, PTO for all of the things they provided our teachers with that week. They were truly spoiled. And then this week, first grade has been doing some safety presentations. They always do, like, summer safety, and they bring in Smokey the Bear, they bring in the water patrol. I didn't get a picture of Rob on there, but he brings his snakes in there. Oh. That's why I didn't make them presentations. I can't do it. But they do have the classes on one day and half the other, so they're coming back again tomorrow to do those. Kindergarten took a field trip to the aquarium, just like fifth grade. Same thing with Latisha, Roderick, and Ryan, and so all of our students were able to go for free. And then we actually, I think, had like 92 parents attend. Almost. Every student, I think, had a parent there, so it was very nice. And then we have at the bottom, Steph Sulcer and Bethany Hennig applied for the Delta Gamma, Delta, Kappa, Beta, Rho Scholarship, and they both received it. And so, they're there with their plaques. And I didn't have pictures from the night, but I wanted to give a shout out to Bethany for being SGE Teacher of the Year, and also Nate for being Supervisor of the Year. I wish I had pictures for them, but I didn't have those. Before I get to Student of the Month, I know Kelly could put in Field Day. Coach does an amazing job with our 3-3-5 students, and he even had, I forgot what district they came from, they came to watch our Field Day, and he's, he was, and they were so impressed with how things were run and the events, and so he said they were just blown away with our Field Day. So, that was really nice, and he loved it. And today on the announcements, he read off all the awards. I feel like there was one more thing she put in there, but she covered it. All right, these are our Positive Office referrals. There's no music, so... There's no music, so.
Good evening.
Good evening.
How are you all doing?
Very good.
Thank you.
Um, I will confess that I did not try to cover everything. If I, if I tried to do that, we'd be here all night. Because I did some really good things at St. Genevieve Middle School. But I did choose a few highlights to share with you. At the top left is a picture from our middle school band concert, which was a great success. And if you were there, you got to see the jazz band back in swing, which was really nice. They did a fabulous job. They've been working only after school, those jazz bands here with Mrs. Elders and Mr. Hull. And put together a really nice performance as well as the other bands too. At the bottom left, that's our NJHS induction from just a few weeks ago. And that's one of my favorite events of the year, not just because it's a true celebration of academics, but also because that is a student-led ceremony. And I think it's a great experience for those, for those guys to really take charge and, and develop their organizational skills, their speaking skills, and really lead the way through that. So hats off to those guys. On the right-hand side, that's a pretty fresh picture. That's just from Saturday. Mrs. Elders and I took about 30 students to Powell Symphony Hall to see the St. Louis Symphony Orchestra play in a really unique concert. While the movie Black Panther was projected, the Symphony Orchestra played the score. And it was a really neat way for our kids to connect to something that they could relate to and still get some culture and art out of it. And they had just a fabulous time. They're extremely well behaved. We received some compliments, in fact, about their behavior that day. And that's something we definitely want to look at doing again. It was a great, great connection point for these kids to see that Symphony Orchestra. On the left-hand side are some shots from our recent round of wings. And I was able to sit in with Mrs. Huffman as she kicked off each wings hour. We go hour by hour, sixth, seventh, eighth grade. And, and one thing that she did that I thought was really fun was that she asked the students to raise their hand if they had been invited to all four wings sessions this year. And if they were seventh or eighth graders, she asked how many of them had made it to every wings session. That was a baby wolf's den in middle school. And the amount of hands that I saw was really impressive and really encouraging. We've got some, some great kids and they're proving it to us all the time. In the center there is Anna Fisher. And these are some awards that she, she received for art pieces entered in the mineral area council on the arts. The one on our right is, if you get a chance to get a closer look, these are composite tiles of varying scales of her own self-portrait, each one drawn by hand in pencil. And she received second place for that black and white piece and fourth place for the color design piece on our left. So hats off to Hannah. That's some really, really impressive work. On the right-hand side, these are our outstanding readers from middle school. Last year, when the English teachers presented the idea to me, I said, yeah, that's great. Let's set some guidelines and I'll reward those guys at the end of the year with a pizza party. And last year it was seven or eight students. This year it was over 40 students who met their goals. In seventh grade, we expect those guys to read over 3,000 words for the year. And in eighth grade, we expected them to read a million pages. And still we had over 40 students qualify. So I thank you for your support in that because I didn't buy the leads this year. So thank you for that. And my hats out to those guys. That's a, a heck of an accomplishment.
Yes.
We appreciate the English teacher for recognizing them in that way. Dragons on fire for this month. Barry Powers, Ethan McDonald, Lucas Horrell, Chad Wright times two, Wyatt Schmelsley and Dawson Litu. The boys dominated this month. Just today, we had the honor of helping Dr. Boyd, who was acting on behalf of the Missouri Association of Secondary School Principals. We helped him surprise Mrs. Huffman, who was awarded Assistant Principal of the Year for the Southeast Region. And that was a really fun way to spend the morning today. We, a lot of us were there. District Office came over and joined us, a few folks from the middle school, but her parents were here too. And her daughters were here. And I think she was really touched by the thought we put into that. And I want to thank John for giving me the time that it took to help pull off those surprises. He did an amazing job in presenting that award to her, talking about the outstanding qualities that garnered her that award. So if you see Mrs. Huffman, I'm sure she'd appreciate a congratulations or a pat on the back. And to wrap things up, I want to take this opportunity to publicly thank these people that helped us have such a good year. I, I feel so fortunate every day to work with the crew that I work with. And while I'm here, I want to thank you too, on behalf of these people and our community as well. Because you guys, the board and the community, place a very generous amount of trust and freedom in us and allowing us to do our jobs. And those are really essential ingredients in us being creative and innovative and, and pushing for growth. And so I thank you for that kind of support and that kind of freedom. And, and I thank you for helping us have such a good year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so on the right, that is a good for Miss Crumb's class, working on this cutout of the school song that Mr. Ross class has provided. We're going to put it in senior team up on top. And he says that we're doing that tomorrow in class. So hopefully it'll be done tomorrow so that the seniors can kind of have their full moment on their last day. And then on the left is Logan Moore. And I found him in his class. I came over to ask him what he was doing and maybe had an outfit. And he said that on their F B L A little trip, they went to Cold Stone. And the woman working just asked him if he would dress up for the night. And I cost him a minute. And he said, yes. So I got my first one.
All right, I guess finally we have all our runners in the month. The last one of the year is Maya Watts. And then we have a lot of positive offers this month. Picture there is Brandon Davis as well. Going down the list, it's Kate Smith, Emily Albeck, Elena Schmidt, Lily Boyd, Brianna Pho, Riley Murphy, Adam Oder, Tyler Hager, Ethan Otten, Daisy Bellman, Abigail Woodard, Brandon Days, Natalie St. Clair, Sophia Hook, Ezra Wolf, Miranda Pondert, Andrew Nagger, Ariella Taylor, Ava Meyer, Callie Winch, Avery Dipple, Sophia Boat, Henry Berndstock, Trinity Davenport, Shayer Lomond, Gaz and Hook, Audrey Jovers, and Alex Hunsley.
Okay, so this was, this third slide is going to be kind of a lot because our track kids did really good this year. They're actually going tomorrow, not tomorrow, this weekend for sectionals. So we had, I think, 12 placers for the girls and then two places for the boys. The track, the track girls dominated district 25, 6 and 10 points overall. But again, their placers, Kara Asher got third in high jump. Cecilia Mooney got third in long jump. Abby Mertland got fourth in triple jump. Jameson Kemper got second in shot. Ballistic grass first in jab. Kayden Hook first in the 300 and 100 meter hurdles. Dakota Meadows got second in the 1600. Kayla Clemens got first in the 400 and 800. Savannah German got first in the 200. And Holland Sangaro got first in the 3200. And then we had three relays that placed first in the four by eight and a four by four and second in the four by two. And then our boys, they ended up getting six out of the 12 teams. And the individual qualifiers were Paul Taylor with first in discates and first in shot and third in jab. And then Aiden Butcher, second in pole vault. FFA, that top right, they went to state two weeks ago, maybe last week. And they ended up not placing, but they said that they had a lot of fun and learned a lot while they were there. And then on the bottom is GAT team. They went a few days ago. And a lot of them placed as well. Gadda Gett got first, Pennyang got first, Char, Roast and Hawk Joker got second in theirs. Cole Nagelson got third, Sarah Bunk got third, and Common Fresh got third. And as a team, a group of kids got third and another group got third. So overall, they ended up having a lot of medals. And I think that was like almost their whole team placed when they went.
Uh, here on the fourth slide, we have a group of tech students that finished our bench that has all the senior signatures on it, or at least I think all of the seniors. They have a senior signature on that. And I believe they just auctioned off that project grad.
Give it away.
Give away a project grad. And then there on the right are our golf athletes that went to state. It's Gavin Hook pictured on the top left, Aiden Boyer on the right, and then Carter Burrow on the bottom on the left. And then Aiden Boyer got second in districts with a score of 76, which is just four over R. Gavin Hooks got sixth with a score of 80. And then Carter qualified with a score of 90. They left on Friday and they were competing Monday and today, I believe.
Uh, so softball this year was a really big hit. It was a devastating loss at districts, or not districts, at, yeah, districts. So for the building record, Ava Greer, I think we broke seven records in total. Ava Greer broke the single season strikeout record. She finished with 156 strikeouts and she's a sophomore. Ava Hoover had three, the highest batting average, which was .551. The most runs scored, which was 41, and most hits with 43. And then Chloe Saffin broke another building record. She broke the single season building percentage record. She had .985 on 194 chances as a catcher. And all three of them are sophomores this year. So looking ahead for the next few. Prom. Um, it went really well. Everything was really nice. The decorations looked nice and a lot of people had a lot of fun. King was Kate White and the queen was Lena Harmon. And for their dance, they played the chicken dance because it's Lena's favorite song. And Kate ended up spinning her and it was just like, it was so cute.
Uh, and then here we have, we have the Teacher of the Month, which is Ms. Romer. And what the student had to say about the Ms. Romer was, she should receive the Teacher of the Month because she truly helped me become something more than just a kid. She helped me realize that adult life is going to be like. She has made the greatest impact on me throughout my high school years, pushing me to do more when I'm not, when I'm supposed to. Standing on me, making sure I don't do bad things and help me to feel confident about myself. She's a smart parent and the best teacher and I think she should be Teacher of the Month. Thank you for your consistent service to the students at S G H S.
All right, that'll be it.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Best part of the night again.
Yep.
Next, I'm going to turn to our safety reports. For this one, we're busy as we can with many other things. There are no safety reports. But that'll be the end of my report tonight.
All right. Next on the agenda is unfinished business. And the first item is the MSBA Full Maintenance and Service Agreement.
Yes, we received this information right after the table board meeting. So this service agreement is for May 1st, 2023 through April 30th of 2024. It costs the district $3,479 to have this online maintenance. But it makes life a whole lot easier for us in the district office. When someone is asking a question, you can link the policy, the procedure, form in your response and send it out to that person and your entire district. The first bullet for anyone looking at this presentation online is access to all of the district's policies and procedures. We have put some forms online and they're in PDF form, so you can print them out. And we're continuing to add those as policies and procedures are updated. So we'll continue that work.
Do you recall what the cost was in the year prior?
Um, I do not, but I think it's pretty comfortable.
For $3,500 to steal, so. I'm guessing you need a motion on that.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve the Missouri School Board's Association Full Maintenance Service Agreement and Membership effective May 1st, 2023 to April 30th, 2024.
Second.
I have a motion in the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have the Prop SG Updates.
Good evening, everyone. Bloomsdale's coming along nicely. The last time I was out there, I believe, was the Friday of the retirement banquet. And Ritter Painting was out there doing some drywalling, getting some painting up. We met with the architects and our construction manager and went through a couple issues. We think we got those resolved, but it's, we did have a weather day today, but it's coming along nicely. If you get a chance, please go out there and look at it. It's, it's pretty spectacular. The other projects, right now we're focusing on St. Genevieve Middle School and the Early Childhood Center. We hope to get bid packages out in June. At the beginning of June, bid packages will be out for three weeks. We'll then get the bids in and hopefully start sometime in July. We did split the Early Childhood Center up. We pulled off the site work because that's going to be a significant amount of site work. So we're going to throw that out first to see if we can get that done while we finalize early childhood plans. So that's kind of where we are with Prop SG right now.
Are we still on schedule with Bloomsdale? I know we were ahead last time.
I really hate to say it out loud, but yes. We are perhaps a little bit ahead of schedule. We are really hopeful to get the secretaries and principals in ahead of time and have them get the lay of the land, get things organized and, and kick off next year as it should be.
I'm glad to keep hearing the local service names like you mentioned tonight. That was one of the things we talked about in big detail when we hired Rock. Much appreciated. All right. Next, we have new business and the first item on the agenda is the A-plus partnership.
Yes, we're excited to have Mr. Schneffler here.
First time. First time. Yeah, so A-plus, should, should take them on here, but kind of focusing first on the seniors of them graduating and stuff like that. Currently, we have 97 seniors in the class. And out of those 97 seniors, 54 of them were registered with the A-plus program. And then out of those 54 seniors in the A-plus program, currently right now, we have 38 of them are going to graduate with A-plus honors. So do a little math, that's almost 40% of our seniors in some way, shape or form are going to have A-plus incentives and help when they go to college. We know extremely helpful and it's, it can be expensive. So, so that's our seniors, just kind of going through the grade levels. Currently, we have 29 freshmen in the A-plus program. Move on to sophomores, we have 41 in the A-plus program. The juniors are at 32. And like I just mentioned, we have 54 of the seniors with 38 of them graduating. Just kind of a couple of other little things focusing, we did focus on the eighth graders. One that are coming in are incoming freshmen. So we will, at the end of the school year, we'll have a, at the freshman orientation, I'll have a chance to speak with all of the freshmen and their parents for the ones that do come to that night. So I'll have a good chance to speak to them, but kind of explain to them how important the A-plus is to them. I do speak with Mr. Draper, Dr. Draper now, certain times about coming to talk to the eighth graders. I was hoping to get to them this school year, just didn't have a chance to, but like I said, we'll get to them at the freshman orientation. Just a couple quick, just a couple of other little things here. There are a lot of opportunity, a lot of chances. There's, there's five requirements that you need. The three, the three main ones are attendance, you need to have 50 hours and the GPA. You pay, you pay these people up to 2.5. Right now, we are, like I said, the seniors are looking very, they're, they're looking very good, meeting those requirements. But with the 50 hours, those are the ones that we kind of, typically those are the ones that we've been running into. I wouldn't say issues or problems, but a lot of times I like to wait till the very last second, very last day. So I have seniors who need to get those hours in. But there is a lot of opportunities. We have Dragon, Dragon Fire, they can take some time to, one, two or some of our students, Dragon Den, Dragons Den, they go to Bloomsdale Elementary and two or some of the little ones, they go to St. Gene elementary, two or some of the little ones up there too. But there is plenty of opportunities for our students to get some A-plus hours. We did have our evaluation on April 18th, I believe it was, April 19th. We had many of the community members that were there. The biggest thing that we took from that meeting was, what I felt like was just communication. You can never over-communicate. So we can just talk to these students as much as we can. We can talk to the parents as much as we can, get the community involved with the A-plus program. It's just, it's just going to help our students out and help our community out as much as we can. So I know some of the students, I know Adriana was there that night for us. We do have a couple, the staff, a couple of little changes here, but I'll just go through them. Dr. Barry Smith is part of our A-plus staff of business education. New this year is Alex Newman, she's the Family Consumer Sciences. Justin Peeters from the Phillips County Department. And of course, this, this Dallas, she, she's probably the one that's running all this. You know, I should be. I can't, she keeps them on my toes. We'll just put it at that. So I thank her very much, very much. Nicole May, the library aide. And I have my sub here, students, Ariel, Ariel Taylor is from the senior class. Adrian Evans from the junior class. And then from the sophomore class, we have Amy, Amy Boyer. And then the freshman class, we have Jaycee Hook. Other than that, I don't think I have anything else. Unless you guys have any questions.
I think you did pretty good.
It's a great program.
Yeah, it is.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'll make a motion to approve the A-plus partnership plan.
I have a motion in the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Before we adjourn, I just want to thank everyone who put on the retirement banquet. It was amazing again. Congratulations to all the winners and retirees. It was a, it was wonderful. After a wonderful night. Seems to always hit on the road recall. And Field Day, right? Was the same day.
In closed session.
Oh, and close of the legislative session, which is always exciting. All right, on to adjourn.
Well, I will make a motion under revised Missouri Statute 610.021 that the Board of Education adjourn to a closed meeting with a closed record and closed vote after a short break, discussing and voting upon following items in business, hiring, firing, disciplining or promoting particular employees, scholastic probation, expulsion or graduation of identifiable individuals and individually identifiable personnel records, performance ratings or records pertaining to employees or applicants for employment, except that this exemption shall not apply to the names, positions, salaries and lengths of services of officers and employees of public agencies once they are employed as such and the names of private sources donating or contributing money to the salary of a chancellor, president of a public university or university in the state of Missouri and not money contributed by the state.
So just.
I'll never say this quickly as, as my predecessor. All right, so I made the motion. Do we have a second? Oh, Eric, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. Okay, we'll have a roll call vote. Jamie Blue, yes. Eric Bosler.
Yes.
David Foba.
Yes.
Myself, yes. Geraldine Diesel, Josh Gettinger.
Yes.
James Kirchner.
Yes.
Martha Reeseinger.
Yes.
All right, seven's here.
Thank you all.